Good evening, everybody. I would like to call out the order of the City of St. Charles City Council meeting for Monday, May 18th, 2025. If we could take the roll, please.
Spellman?
Here.
Patrilla?
Here.
Werble?
Here.
Bezner?
Here.
Weber?
Here.
Skolkaitis?
Here.
Gump?
Bongard?
Here.
Munn?
Here.
Gem?
Here.
Thank you very much. All right, we're going to start by having Alderman, Patrilla give tonight some vacation.
We ask for your guidance as we determine important matters relating to our community, and we ask for your guidance to make the right decisions on behalf of our constituents. Amen.
And then Alderman Ballack, if you can lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Oh, I'm sorry. That's me, right?
That's you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we're going to start tonight out with a couple proclamations. Want to welcome everybody. Great crowd. Thanks for all being here. The first proclamation that we're going to start with tonight is National Public Works Week, which is from May 18th to May 24th, and the proclamation reads as follows. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to the sustainable and resilient communities, and the public health, high quality of life, and the well-being of the people of the City of St. Charles. And whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of the government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities, essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and the children of the City of St. Charles to gain knowledge of and maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year 2025 marks the 65th Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association and the Canadian Public Works Association, be it now resolved therefore that I, Clint Hall, Mayor of the City of St. Charles, do hereby designate the week of May 18th through the 24th of 2025 as National Public Works Week. I urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contribution they make to protecting our national health, safety, and advancing the quality of life for all. So if we could give a round of applause to our public workers. We have Peter Sur here, who is Director of Public Works, but Peter, on behalf of all of us, and I know you represent all your employees, but I know that many in this room would share the thought that nobody does it better than St. Charles. Those streets get plowed, everything gets done, you're out there, and we just so appreciate what you do. Even though it's not always front and center, this week it is, and on behalf of the entire City Council and all the residents, tell your staff thank you and to keep up the good work. So thank you for your work. The second proclamation is to celebrate Memorial Day, which is going to be on May 26th of 2025, and the proclamation reads as follows. Whereas today, we honor the courageous patriots, including our fellow citizens, who made the ultimate sacrifice while serving in the armed forces to defend our freedom. The City of St. Charles pays tribute to their bravery and their dedication, and whereas on this day, we recognize the profound terror of war. It is essential to fully comprehend the sacrifices of those we honor. And whereas we honor not only the fallen soldiers who sacrificed their lives in service to our country, but also those who were held captive as prisoners of war and those who were declared missing in action. And whereas it is important to remember that our freedom should never be taken for granted. Instead, we must reflect on the efforts made to defend and honor our wonderful city and country. And whereas we observe Memorial Day, we honor our veterans with the deepest respect and appreciation for their unwavering commitment and their selflessness. Now therefore, I, Clint Hall, Mayor of St. Charles, do here proclaim May 26th, 2025, Memorial Day, a time for us to pause and remember the brave individuals who have made the ultimate sacrifice in defending our nation's freedom. Let us never forget their selflessness and commitment to our country. There'll be some information later on about all the Memorial Day activities that are going to be occurring next week, and really, really excited and thank you. All right, next up, we're going to move over to Youth Commission, and we will be presenting the Impact Awards. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Straker. A retired teacher from St. Charles East, who I can tell you just is having four kids that went through that program, just incredible work, and Youth Commission does great work, so I'm going to invite you guys up here to present some awards. So with that, I'll turn it over to you.
Could we get all students to be recognized, but Calvin James, Cassidy, and, uh, that one, uh, Calvin James, and Cassidy?
Okay, as you said, my name is Tom Straker, and I also have Megan Bishop, the Chair of the Youth Commission, and Lauren Tuttles, Youth Commissioner, representing the Commission today, and we're really excited to be able to present this award. So on behalf of Youth Commission, I'd like to thank the Mayor and City Council members for the opportunity to recognize some St. Charles students with the Youth Impact Award tonight. The Impact Award recognizes young people who saw a need in St. Charles and acted to make things better without being told to, without having any kind of incentive other than themselves and pride in their community, to make things better for our community. So thank you for that. So I'm going to start with recognition for Calvin Reed and James Briner. Calvin James are the founders of St. Charles Urban Design Advocates. They formed the organization in '23, achieved 501(c)(3) status in '24, to further their vision for advancing safe, eco-friendly, human-centered transportation for all citizens. Inspired by a tragic accident that took the life of a bicycle commuter in St. Charles, restaurant worker Calvin and James built partnerships and sourced funding to create and distribute bicycle safety kits free of charge to many other area bicycle commuters. They've also conducted transportation accessibility survey to area residents and are working with Kane County Division of Transportation to identify and improve opportunities for all of us. So thank you, Calvin and James. Next up is Cassidy Wood. Cassidy accepted an invitation from a friend to attend the Duquesne Leadership Conference four years ago, recognized her own inspiration to lead, and got busy volunteering through several activities at East High School. Cassidy's conscientious hard work, follow-through, and commitment to causes larger than herself will stand as her legacy to other students. In general, Youth Commission recognizes Cassidy's steady growth from a volunteer to a leader in many aspects of school life, but also in particular, we're recognizing her growth and leadership role within St. Charles FCC Guides, where her work in mentoring peers, sometimes numbering over 100, at an event about the Guide's role, while also welcoming and supporting future Saints, new Saints, alumni, families, guests, and community members at the high school has been extraordinary. She has successfully organized freshman orientation, back-to-school night, parent teacher conferences, and a distinguished alumni meet and greet, and she is thinking about a career in education, and so we hope she continues. She's got a great start. And then the next group, and this is a large group, is the Social Studies National Honor Society from East High School, and so I've asked them to kind of get in alphabetical orders, so that's where your certificates lie, so try to... So Risha Amin.
Ella Brutal.
Kellawee Katsapera.
Mia Clark.
Kanal Kane.
President of the club with Sophia Rubin.
At the end, let me just tell you about what they did. At the start of the year, this group would not be satisfied with typical Honor Society role of tutoring peers on social studies concepts. Instead, they asked the school leadership what their school needed and how could they help. In response to those suggestions in the social studies ballpark, they knocked it out of the park and started many new traditions. This group planned, organized, executed, produced, and presented a whole litany of brand-new presentations and activities to roughly 2,500 students, faculty, and honored guests over the last nine months. Partial list includes new video presentations created for several holidays, including Constitution Day, Labor Day, Veterans Day. Also for Veterans Day, they created a slide presentation of East staff members and family members that have served our country, and they set up flags and signs at school entrances. They also completed slide presentations and added descriptions for the school announcements about the history of Pearl Harbor Day, Martin Luther King Day, and a recap of national elections. The group also provided support at the Vietnam Vet's presentation, decorating greeting guests, participating in the presentations, and lunch conversations during the event, and joining together for group photo at the end. And yet, they still did tutor many other students. So Youth Commission thanks you all for your commitment to your peers, mentors, and our heroes, as well as your community. So thank you. We'd like to do a couple pictures, so students, and family members, and mentors, come on
All right, we'll let everybody work their way out, and then we'll go ahead and get Okay, we're now going to move on to the next agenda item, so Alderman, Skolkaitis, I would now ask you to present the omnibus items for vote.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve the omnibus's vote as presented.
Okay, roll call.
Spellman?
Yes.
Patrilla?
Yes.
Werble?
Yes.
Bezner?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Skolkaitis?
Yes.
Bongard?
Yes.
Munn?
Yes.
Gem?
Yes.
Okay, the motion carries. Okay, there is no old business, so we're now going to move on to new business. I'm going to ask City Administrator Ms. McGuire to come up and give a brief presentation on the next three agenda items, since they are all the way. So Ms. McGuire?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. As Council is probably aware, in April 1st election, Susan Hanson was elected in an uncontested race for our city clerk position. She has since relocated outside of the city limits for work. She did not send a formal declaration to withdraw from that position, so we do have before you two resolutions that are necessary. One, to declare that vacancy, and then two, to accept applications for that position. Once approved, we will post on our website, social media, as well as do a press release to accept any interested applicants. We will be doing that through June 9th with the intent to appoint a new city clerk at the June 16th meeting. In the interim, Nancy Garrison has agreed to come out of retirement for the third time to serve as our interim city clerk. With that, I can answer any questions. Otherwise, we would take each of those resolutions and motions in order.
Okay, is there any questions? Okay, first, is there a motion to approve the resolution declaring the vacancy in the office of the Circuit Clerk?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, so motion by Gem, second by...
So that was a motion to appoint the city clerk.
City clerk.
Thank you.
Okay, who had the second?
Patrilla.
Is there any questions or discussion? Okay, roll call.
Spellman?
Yes.
Patrilla?
Yes.
Werble?
Yes.
Bezner?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Skolkaitis?
Yes.
Bongard?
Yes.
Munn?
Yes.
Gem?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next up, I am looking for a motion to approve a resolution to post an opening to fill the vacancy of the office of city clerk.
Munn's move.
Okay, Munn's move. There's a second by Spellman. Any questions or comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Spellman?
Yes.
Patrilla?
Yes.
Werble?
Yes.
Bezner?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Skolkaitis?
Yes.
Bongard?
Yes.
Munn?
Yes.
Gem?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, next up is a recommendation from myself to approve the appointment of Nancy Garrison as an interim city clerk. Do I hear a motion?
Move for approval. Second.
Okay, motion by Werble, second by Patrilla. Is there any questions or discussions? Okay, roll call, please.
Spellman?
Yes.
Patrilla?
Yes.
Werble?
Yes.
Bezner?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Skolkaitis?
Yes.
Bongard?
Yes.
Munn?
Yes.
Gem?
Yes.
Okay, so motion carries. So I just, on behalf of all of us, Nancy, I just want to again say thank you. It's just wonderful that you answered the bell again, and on behalf of not only all of us, but the citizens, thank you for stepping up. Really, really appreciate it. Next up is a recommendation from myself to approve the appointments of Mayor Pro Temp and Committee Chairs, as noted in the executive summary. Is there a motion to approve?
Some of... Second.
Some motion by Bezner, second by Werble. Are there any questions or comments? Okay, take the roll, please.
Spellman?
Yes.
Patrilla?
Yes.
Werble?
Yes.
Bezner?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Skolkaitis?
Yes.
Bongard?
Yes.
Munn?
Yes.
Gem?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Okay, now to item E, a motion to approve a resolution authorizing a service agreement with the St. Charles Business Alliance for fiscal year '25-'26 in the amount of $830,000. I'll turn it over to Mr. Conley, who will present this item and answer any questions. Mr. Conley?
Good evening. On February 3rd, the St. Charles Business Alliance made their annual funding presentation to the Government Operations Committee. At the conclusion of the presentation, the committee voted unanimously to support the 180... Sorry, $830,000 for this fiscal year's annual funding. With that, I can take any questions.
Does anybody have any questions? I'm sorry?
Move for approval.
Second.
All right, Bongard motion, Munn's on the second. Roll call, please.
Spellman?
Yes.
Patrilla?
Yes.
Werble?
Yes.
Bezner?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Skolkaitis?
Yes.
Bongard?
Yes.
Munn?
Yes.
Gem?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to item F, looking for a motion to approve a resolution authorizing a service agreement with the St. Charles History Museum for fiscal year '25-'26 in the amount of $60,000.
Sure. Like before, the History Museum presented its request for funding at the February 3rd Government Operations Committee meeting. The funding request was $60,000, which is the same as the previous year. Attached for approval tonight is the actual service agreement for that between the city and the History Museum. So happy to take any questions.
Any questions? Okay, is there a motion?
Move for approval. Second.
Okay, motion by Werble, second by Patrilla. Roll call, please.
Spellman?
Yes.
Patrilla?
Yes.
Werble?
Yes.
Bezner?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Skolkaitis?
Yes.
Bongard?
Yes.
Munn?
Yes.
Gem?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, we're now going to move on to committee reports, starting with Government Operations, and Mr. Weber, the items for Government Operations.
Yes, Mayor Hall. I have item A2. At the Government Ops Committee, there was a little bit of confusion regarding what was all in the language, and so just to clarify, I wanted to make a motion to approve the city parking lot closure, as well as the raising of the flag for the inclusion celebration.
Okay, may I have a motion?
Motion.
Okay, it was moved by Spellman, seconded by Gem. Any further discussion or questions? Okay, roll call.
Spellman?
Yes.
Patrilla?
Yes.
Werble?
Yes.
Bezner?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Skolkaitis?
Yes.
Bongard?
Yes.
Munn?
Yes.
Gem?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Now turning to Government Services.
Nothing further, Your Honor.
Okay. Next, moving to Planning and Development. Number one, a motion to approve a resolution approving a certificate of appropriateness for demolition of 217 Seater Avenue, also known as the Berry House. So before we get started on that, I just want to make a couple comments, just to make sure that everybody is up to speed as to where we are at. So last week, at the Planning and Development Committee, a vote was taken to approve the demolition of 217 Seater, which is also known as the Berry House, pending City Council approval tonight. That seven days seems a long time ago, and over the seven days, there has been a lot that's happened, including the fact that the church, we verified the church has received an offer to buy that property from the church on Friday, May 16th. In addition, the church has received an offer or offers to potentially move the Berry House from its current location to another one. The church reached out to the city to inform the city and the City Council that these offers had been made and these other opportunities existed. In addition, the church also had indicated, as it has, that parking is the number-one concern, and to ask the city if they were to accept the purchase. Would the city also be open to helping solve the parking problems in one specific way by potentially changing the existing parallel parking on Third Avenue to diagonal parking to gain more spots, and also to work with the church on new lot improvements on the South Lot when the second home that already had been approved for demolition? What I want to say is the bottom line is that there's still a lot of work to be done, and the church, and the city, and the residents representing the people that would like to see the property preserved have all talked, and have also understood that it's going to take time for the parties to try to work through all the information that has just been presented. What's happened in this last week is all that information has come in, everybody has worked extremely hard to try to work together, to try to find a way to preserve the Berry House while also addressing the church's needs that have been outlined. And so one of the things that I know that always occurs, and it's very important, is public comments. Public comments are always available at the end, but I hope that the summary of where we have been and where we are going right now would answer some of the questions as to the future of this piece of property. So as a side note, before I look and turn it over to City Council Werble, or City Council Member Werble, I just want to look into the crowd, and I want to tell you how appreciative the City Council is of all the efforts that everybody has been making over the past week. There's been a great deal of work that's been done, and that includes the church, that includes the preservationists, that includes residents who have taken the time. It also includes the staff, who continues to work hard each and every day, and all the council members. I've only been the mayor two weeks, I can tell you right now, I have been so incredibly impressed by the work that this council has put in over the last ten... the last, well, for me, two weeks, but the last seven days. And so I just want to let everybody know that's here on this issue, how much we appreciate the fact that you're here. We've heard you, we're working, everybody continues to work on it, and with that, I'm going to turn it over to Council Member Werble.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to entertain a motion to postpone Agenda Item C1 until the July 21st City Council meeting.
Chairman Werble, I would like to make a motion to postpone this agenda item until the 7/21 City Council meeting. That way, there's enough time for all the parties to discuss and work together and try to come up with a, some kind of a resolution.
Okay.
Bezner will second that.
Okay, so there's been a motion made by Mr. Weber, there has been a second by Alderman Bezner. Are there any additional questions or comments by any council members? Okay, roll call.
Spellman?
Yes.
Patrilla?
Yes.
Werble?
Yes.
Bezner?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Skolkaitis?
Yes.
Bongard?
Yes.
Munn?
Yes.
Gem?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Just so that I just want to move on and just make sure that everybody understands exactly what that means. What that does is it gives everybody 60 days, so this motion or this item on the agenda will be back up in front of us. And what was the date that was...
It was on July 21st, 7/21.
July 21st. So that's the next time that this matter will be in front of this council. Between now and July 21st, there's a lot of work to be done, and I have great faith in the fact that everybody's going to put in the time and effort to try to accomplish what's in the best interest of the church, the community, the Berry House, and we're going to get to work on that. So again, thank you, and we will now move on to the next item, which would be public comments. Are there any public comments? Okay, come on up. And Mr. Catella, if you could please give us your full name and...
Thank you.
No address, just full name.
Very well. My name is Anthony Catella. I am a citizen of St. Charles. Actually, I would like to say my name is Captain Anthony Catella of the United States Volunteers. I reside here in the City of St. Charles. I've lived here all my life, and my father was an upstanding and longstanding attorney in this fair city of ours, and he served in the sprit... he served as city attorney in the sprit administration. I come before you, Mr. Mayor, honored members of the council, my fellow citizens... I come before you to submit myself publicly as a candidate for city clerk of St. Charles. I believe I can be a good city clerk because I've been a good soldier. A soldier knows a mission and knows his duty, and I know my mission, I know my duty, and that is to serve my community and my country. And if given an opportunity, as I really believe, I request I can do a good job as city clerk. I ran for Circuit Clerk of this Kane County, and I won over 100,000 votes with 47% of the vote. I'm a viable candidate for public office, and I believe public office, holding public office and serving in a civil office, I believe it is a holy calling and a patriotic calling of mine, just as much as it was to stand up and put that uniform on and swear to preserve and protect the Constitution of the United States. I can do it on the national level, one day I will, and I can do it at the circuit level, at the municipal level, because I believe in myself, and I believe in God, and I believe in the future of the United States of America.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Catella. Thank you, Mr. Catella. All right, any other public comment? Okay, we have Mr. Folks.
I'd like to address the council and the mayor, and I appreciate the time that you
I'd like to address the council and the mayor, and I appreciate the time that you have given me to do so. My name is Mike Folks, and I'm speaking to you tonight on behalf of the four posts that make up the Veterans Center on North Second Street in St. Charles. Monday, May 26th, you know, is Memorial Day. The day is filled with many activities, starting at 6:00 a.m., with the flag racing ceremony at the Baker Center with taffs and a 21-round rifle volley. Right after that, we proceed to the South Cemetery at the intersection of South Seventh Avenue and Madison Avenue, with the same ceremony as presented at the Baker Center. When we're done there, we then proceed north on Fifth Avenue to the Two Cemeteries by the Bethlehem Lutheran Church, where we repeat the ceremonies at each cemetery. That will bring us to about 7:00 a.m., and at 7:30, a veterans' community breakfast fundraiser starts at Baker Memorial Church on West Main Street. Then, at 10:00 a.m., the Memorial Day Parade steps off from the intersection of Sixth and Main Streets. The parade is a very nice community parade with Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, St. Charles East, and St. Charles North bands. There are military vehicles and many more community organizations participating. It is a truly wonderful event that leads you to believe St. Charles is truly a wonderful place to live and to raise a family. When the parade ends, there's a memorial service to the north of the Municipal Building at the Riverwalk Freedom Shrine. Truly, St. Charles is the greatest place to live in America. There is a new element to the parade this year, is being called the March of Honor. This has been introduced by Mark Powell, who's the Memorial Day Parade Coordinator, and also a member of the veterans' organizations. It's a new tradition. Every citizen of St. Charles is asked to join in a community-wide group, walking in tribute to 1,300-plus veterans that are buried in local cemeteries in St. Charles. We are inviting anyone, moms, dads, kids, neighbors, friends, anyone with an American flag, to walk with us. It's a powerful way to show our respect and gratitude for our loved ones and anyone who has served and sacrificed. You will be marching in the Memorial Day Parade. The date is Monday, May 26th. The meeting location is Sixth and Walnut Street in St. Charles, and there is parking available at Thompson Middle School. The arrival time is 9:00, parade begins at 10:00. Let the parade marshals know that you are there with the March of Honor. Each participant must bring their own American flag. American flags will not be provided this year. Let's come together as a community to honor the fallen. Bring your American flag, bring a friend, and help us make this a tradition, remembrance, and unity. I'd like to thank you for your time to address the council members and the mayor of St. Charles and the general public. Come on out. Most of you do, we have a very good attendance, because this is a local parade, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. I can tell you, everything that occurs on that day is just so somber, it's just a wonderful, wonderful event, and, Mr. Folks, we appreciate everything that you and the other veterans do to memorialize that, so thank you very much for being here. Okay, any other public comments? Okay, no other public comments? Any additional items from the council or staff? Okay, couple of things on my end. I touched just briefly on it, but I want to touch on it one more time as it relates to the Berry House. This has obviously been a really busy week, and I just want to make sure that all of you in this audience understand, from all of our perspectives, how appreciative we are of the way that you've presented all this to the council. You know, what has become very evident over the last couple of weeks is just how important this issue is to so many in our community, the church, which has been here a long time, the preservation community, and our residents. And what I can tell you, just from my standpoint, and I'm the new, you know, Vicky and I are the new people up here, so I think it's the first time that we've received all the emails that we've received, but I'll tell you what, the consistent theme through all of them was that they were respectful, they just stood and talked about the position that they had on both sides, wasn't derogatory, wasn't mean-spirited, it was all just about advocating the position that was important. And I know that I speak on my behalf as your new mayor, but I also think I speak on behalf of the entire council, that I am so appreciative of the way that St. Charles is handling this. I said in my speech a couple of weeks ago that we should always make sure that, you know, we are an example, and I'll tell you, the last two weeks has been something that I'm very, very proud to be the mayor of your city, and I appreciate it, and I know that we'll continue to work in that fashion to try to get a resolution. So, I just want to applaud all of you for the way that you've handled this. Thank you. Next up, just a couple of things. We talked about the National Public Works Week. Peter Surt, could you stand up real quick? So, Peter is the Director of our Public Works. Peter, just, you know, again, I know that we had the resolution, but I had a chance to take a tour of that facility. Absolutely amazing, and I know that probably your workers don't always know how much we all appreciate what you do, but please understand that we know that the city of St. Charles that we have is because of the work that you and your crew put in, so thank you very much. Really appreciate it. Very exciting time for our seniors in the community. St. Charles North and St. Charles East have been, the seniors have been going through, they've had prom, they've had senior awards night, and the last step is the graduation that's going to take place on May 22nd. When I look up here and I look around, there's a lot of us that went through that graduation ceremony, not at NIU, but in the St. Charles East gym, but ultimately, when we think about our seniors at North and East, we're so proud of what they've accomplished, we want them to be safe, we want to celebrate with them, and we want them to come back. So, you know, when you're out there, they're going to go away to college, they're going to be in the military, they're going to do vocational stuff, but they'll always be a part of St. Charles, and so, we wish them all luck as they go through this ceremony. Memorial Day, we talked about it, but I want to spend a little bit of time on it because of its importance. Memorial Day is Monday, May 26th. As Mr. Folks had said, there's lots going on, but we want to encourage everybody to come on out, because it's so important to honor the people and the veterans who have given their lives and served to our country. That parade is at 10:00 a.m. I love the fact that Mark Powell's trying to do that March of Honor. I want to see all the stores in the city of St. Charles sold out of American flags, right? It would be great to see all those flags, but, you know, make sure that you take the time to be there, it's so important, and, you know, again, thanks for coming and telling us about it, and I know that I was at that breakfast, it was pretty good pancakes there, too. And then the last thing is, you know, reminder that on Monday, the city offices are closed, but the last thing that I just wanted to note, some things that I was real proud of as your mayor for the last two weeks, number one, we had the police out working all week long on behalf of Special Olympics. The St. Charles Police Department, with only seven members, beat the Bartlett Police Department in the basketball game at Thompson. Brian, you were there, right?
Yeah. It was a great game, well done.
So, not only that, but it was my understanding that Bartlett not only had more players, but also had some of their kids play.
Yeah, there were some pretty young people out there.
And there's a softball game in the summer, so I love the fact that St. Charles is doing that, and then on Friday, when you drove by Dunkin' Donuts, there were cops on top, and those, again, the St. Charles Police Department, our law enforcement community just goes above and beyond to support Special Olympics, and I think that the basketball game raised about 3,500, I'm not sure how much cops on tops did, but we should just be very blessed to have a police department that prioritizes funding and helping those athletes, it's a very special time. So, just very, very proud to be your mayor for the last two weeks. So, with Mr. Petrilla?
Oh, sorry, I?
No, no, absolutely.
We're on the theme of law enforcement, thank you for that. In addition to Fire Department, I want to say thank you, because a couple of weeks ago, I was able to shadow Gold Shift on Sunday, so just wanted to let the chief know that, you know, thank you for all of what you do and your team does, and it was a great experience. We had some, we had breakfast with the police as well, so it was good pancakes at the firehouse as well, so, so thank you very much for that.
And the last thing, I'm going to put Vicky on the spot, and Alderman, after two weeks, what do you think?
I have a lot to say, but I'm loving it.